I will call this meeting, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't think I see anyone that would be addressing the board from the citizen's perspective. So we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda with the following changes. Moving item seven H from the consent agenda to the regular agenda because of a potential conflict of interest for Commissioner Gosvig. Adding, and that would be eleven A, adding item eleven B to approve or discuss the budget process as amended. And item eleven C, the authorization for the administrator to employ the use of a headhunter firm to further our process of looking for a replacement for the human resource director.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Don't move. Right, and then we have.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
Yes. As amended.
And is there a second to that?
Second.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Don't move. All right, let's move on to the regular agenda. HHS Housing Trust Fund. I think we have Jeff will speak to that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Lynn, I'm Social Service Division Director here. Ann Lyneth would have been here with us today. She was unable to attend, she was a sick child at home, so she would probably have been doing the lion's share of this presentation, so I will do the best I can in her absence. Back in December, I believe, we came before you and I did a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to go through the PowerPoint again. Thank you. So I'm not going to go through the PowerPoint again. It's out there, someone, I'm sure it's in the past agendas, you'd be able to look at it if you wanted to. What we needed to do today was come before you and talk a little bit about what our next step is. As a, I'll just run through real quick. This is regarding the approximately $710,000 the county is going to be receiving in July of this year. We'll be getting, we'll be getting another allocation for the next following four years. So we don't know how much those allocations will be. We have every reason to believe they'll be like sums, probably down a little bit from that, but they'll be good sums. And know that money is, how they come up with that, at least in part, is the homeless counts that come from our school districts in our county regarding children and youth that are either homeless or at risk of homelessness. That's kind of where some of these numbers come from. With that money, we're required to do one of two things. We have to either do rental assistance or housing case management. We would hope to be able to do both of those within the confines of the dollars we have. But as you're aware, in our community, we have significant challenges when it comes to housing in general. We would have a hard time spending 100 or $710,000 on housing because there isn't any place to put people. So what we are proposing is that we use at least a significant, we'll take all the money and put it into a housing trust fund. And once it goes into that housing trust fund, it's counted, it should be counted as spent. Because we do have to have it spent by this, this first allocation has to be spent by January 31st of 25. January 1st of 25. So we have a year and a half to spend this first amount. If we put it into a housing trust fund, the hope is we'll be able to use this to spur development of housing projects of, whether it be duplexes or fourplexes or thirtyplexes. Something to spur developers to continue moving forward with creating housing options for low income and medium income workforce type housing. So in order for us to move this forward, we're going to need to do, according to statute, we'll have to have an ordinance, a county ordinance. What we're asking right now is that you authorize us to move forward, forward with the development of an ordinance. And then the corresponding pieces that would go with that, which would be an RFP to find a holder of the trust fund, assuming this is the way that you guys want to go. So we have to find someone to hold the trust fund, and then we'd have to develop the processes and procedures for accessing those dollars. We're hopeful that this will, this will do, will create a lasting effect on our community rather than a short-term effect. We still hope to be able to use the funds for both the housing case management because we know what happens when you don't have housing case managers and you have people moving into housing. We have challenges that arise like we've seen in some areas in our community. The other piece is we want to make sure that we're able to continue to provide rental assistance. We already have some rental assistance within the, within the community, within the county that comes through our financial programs. This would be an added one, but go alongside that. So I guess what I'm asking right now is for permission for the County Health and Human Services Department to move forward with the development of an ordinance that we would bring back to the board, probably late spring, early summer. This money, again, funds in July, and we'd like to, we'd like by fall to have something in place where we are actually moving things forward with our projects.
Okay, questions, comments, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jeff, would some of that fund, could that be used with the HRDC and things like the Conifer Estates project? Would that be the sort of things that, I want to, can I get my head around that?
Right, we've actually met with them, and we've seen that they do have some projects kind of online right now that they're, that they're trying to move forward. And yeah, that, those would be good projects, those. It would depend, what I would assume will happen is once the money ends up in the trust, the trust holders would put out an RFP regarding, these are the things we have to have done. Because there are pieces that by statute we need to do. And then within that, what's the biggest bang for a buck? Where can we get the most out of these projects to create a housing within, within the community? The, the hope is, once you develop a fund, who knows? Maybe other entities would want to contribute to that fund. Because it would, it would just be a fund that's held for a stated purpose.
Okay, Joe.
Could you talk a little bit more about the RFP? What exactly would the RF be, RFP be for? Would that be for developers to come in and do the project, or?
We'd need to do, first of all, we'd have to do an RF, the one that we would be talking about developing is to the RFP to see who the holder of the fund would be. Right? So they would have to request, they'd have to request or put a proposal in saying, you know, here's, here's how we're going to hold it. This is the way we would see accessing it. This is how much, you know, administrative dollars they take off the top. All those types of things would be built into that initial proposal. The, and then from there forward, we would anticipate that there would be secondary RFPs, probably, probably a standing RFP that, that developers could bring forward. If you, let's say you put $100,000 aside for, for the housing case management and however much aside for the rental assistance. You know, outside of that, there would be, how are people going to access those dollars? And that would probably, I'm guessing, would just be an open RFP put together by whoever we decide as a part of a council or board or committee that would be a part of, of the allocation of the dollars. I would anticipate we would have at least one commissioner on, on something like that because this is essentially it's county money. So we want to make sure it's used appropriately.
Mr. Chair, and then just one other question.
Joe, follow up.
Yeah, have you seen any other similar communities around the state as, as far as examples to look to? Or is there talk of anyone else doing something similar, or?
Crowley County has a housing trust fund right now. It's, it is held by their HRDC, and it's, and they have a different, their situation's a little different. Their HRDC is actually three HRDCs kind of combined. It's, I think, Brainerd and one of the other cities each have their own, their own piece of that. But it's being, it's held by them. There, I think there's probably another half dozen or so communities around, counties around the state that have them. I don't have, I don't have those names right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, John? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what type of, what, what kind of entity would be eligible to administer the trust and, and what would be the typical management fees? And then follow, and then one more question, sorry to throw this at you. The committee that you would put together to review the RFPs, does that eventually come back to the full commission for approval? As a mouthful, sorry.
Last question first?
Yeah.
It would be what you guys want. If you wanted us to bring it back for full approval, I think we could, I'd maybe turn to Tom and ask what the most appropriate response there would be, but I think, I think we certainly could do that. And then, what were the other questions?
What, what would the typical entity be that would, that would, that would be eligible to administer that trust fund? And what kind of management fees would we expect?
Well, I would see, you know, HRDC, Donovan Brainerd does it. I think that that, that could certainly be a viable entity. You could see an entity like BiCap maybe coming forward, Northwest Foundation.
Right.
You know, there's, there's a number of different entities within our community and probably relatively local outside our community that I think would be eligible for something like this. The, the amount that's, you know, oftentimes when we administer grants, we can take a 10%, I think about a 10% amount on what we administer for grants. Now, again, part of the RFP is how can we get the best bang for our buck? Maybe someone comes back and says, look, we just want to do this because we think it's the right thing to do, we're not going to charge you. Or they might be asking for full admin costs, I don't.
Okay, anyone else have questions? Tim?
Mr. Chair. Jeff, so it says these funds, there's $710,000, $746 dollars per year, one allocation, is that for each year for the next five years?
It's five years, and we will get, and I don't think we're going to get an equal allegation because it's, it's based on the, on the homeless counts.
Okay.
Considering our community and the number of homeless and at-risk homeless people we have, we would anticipate that it still will be a significant amount. My guess is it will go down some over the years because maybe we'll be housing people and we'll have fewer homeless people. And other counties, when they start seeing how much money is, you know, allocated to this, may do a better job of, of making sure that their numbers are counted better. So the numbers, the number could drop, but I still think, when you look at our community, the number of, the number of homeless people and the number of people that are at risk of homelessness in our community is so high that I think that we're going to continue to get a significant amount.
So when you, when you say a community, that it's beyond the city limits of Boeckman, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chair, I, I'm in support of this, but I'm not too sure how this would affect our fiduciary responsibility as, as a board. And does that relieve us of that? Or, or how does, how would a, a signing these funds to, to a different organization, how would that affect our responsibility? And, and can the county do, you know, just, just as equal good a job as, as any other organization?
Um, I, I think I think there are entities out there that are more familiar with housing, housing projects than we are at the county. I think it would be a challenge for us, not an insurmountable challenge, we could certainly do it. But I think it would be a challenge for us to take that on and and continue to do the best job of advocating. As far as the fiduciary piece, I, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? And Jeff, what you're asking for tonight is an okay to move forward to work on this ordinance?
That's correct. We've, we've started to put together some of it in hopes that we've been able to move this forward. Started, we started working on some RFPs and ordinance language. We pulled some of that from, from what Brainerd already has, what Crowley County already has. So we've already started looking at some of those types of things. We would hope to be able to come back to you in a relatively short period of time. But because it has to be an ordinance, we of course need the county board approval.
Yeah, so then, what? Do you have?
You finish your thought.
No, I was just thinking that, at this point, I was just going to ask, are we ready to go ahead and make that motion to start the process of looking into and working on an ordinance?
My, my question before that, just, what's the alternative? If we didn't put it in a trust and out the $710,000, what would, what would the alternative be, Jeff?
Well, I think, I think we would certainly have to do what's required within, within the statute, which is make sure that either the, the assistance is available or, or the housing case management. So that would be one piece. We would probably put it out to RFPs for those types of things. We would, we would certainly try and figure out how can we continue to develop housing within our community. That the challenges without, if we're the holder of the dollar, it's unlikely that other people are going to willingly hand us our, you know, we get our, we get taxes from them, so they're not likely going to want to just give us more or add more to it. I don't know how likely that is anyway, but it's a possibility. We could, we could certainly move it forward. Like I, like I said to Commissioner Sumner, we could, we could hold that, we could move it forward. I just don't know if it would be as effective.
Would you, did you, did you say you might struggle to be able to, to spend it within the parameters that are in the program? Or did I not hear that? If you weren't, if you don't put it in a trust, it sounds like you have a little more latitude, maybe if it's in the trust or not.
I don't know that we have, that, there's a lot of latitude with this to begin with. This was not put together as a DHS grant, it comes out of the Department of Revenue. So they have, they have a different level of requirements, less than we often see in DHS dollars. I've been, I've been assured that it's, it's pretty open. We can do what we, what we want to with the money as long as it is affecting the, the target population. And as long as we follow the, what's in the statutes. So it's pretty open either way. It's just the management of it, I think. The one piece that is, that could be a challenge is we do have to have it spent.
That's it.
And by putting it in the trust, I believe it's spent, once you put it there.
So you could potentially accumulate it and maybe do a bigger project like a Conifer Estates type thing or something and not have to worry about being up against the deadline of having to send it back.
Right, now I will say that I have not gotten anything in writing from the state on this, but I have talked with them over the phone. I went through all of these scenarios you guys are suggesting, and they've said, yes, that does meet our requirements, but I've not gotten anything in writing.
Thank you.
Yes, John? So is it possible that an entity like an HRDC or something like that could use that money as leverage for matching grants that we don't have available? It's a county, but they might as, as the type of entity that they are, is that a possibility?
That's the hope, actually. We're, we're often like, HRDC, what I understand is they need, they need some dollars to create matching dollars so they can move forward with a relatively large project that is anticipated to be over the next 10 to 20 years. Like a big project, lots of stuff. And they need, they need some startup funds for that. This could be one avenue for that in order for them to in order for them to get more dollars elsewhere. And that's, that's been the hope of this all along. So Administrator Barry has been, he's talked to us a lot about that, about us really wanting to try and leverage the dollars we have to get the most out of them. And we really want to be able to, we really want a lasting piece of our community rather than, it's, it's easy enough to spend money by, by doing rental assistance and those types of things. But again, even that would be a challenge because we don't have enough housing in our community, anywhere in the county, not just, not just here.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we I think empower the HHS to begin the housing trust fund process with the RFPs, is that what we need to do? For the ordinance? Yeah, for the ordinance. That, is that clear enough, or maybe we need to clear that up?
It would be helpful if you cleared that up.
How should he say it?
Well, there should be, there should be a motion to approve, I think, on your paperwork there, but essentially prove the, the directing staff to develop the ordinance to bring back for approval by the board.
Out of all these pages, I don't see that.
I should be on page eighty-nine.
Well, it's the summary statement, is that? Will you read the summary statement as the motion?
I'm looking for the page that.
Mr. Chair, if I can, if I can be helpful, I, you know, I would second that motion, but with the clarification to approve the development of the housing trust fund.
For exactly this reason. Yeah, that's okay, that's right. So we don't actually have the formal motion recommended in the paperwork, so we'll develop it now. Our recommendation, and you need specifically recommendation to develop the ordinance and direct staff to move to put in place the trust documents, correct? That we'll later bring back to the board for your final approval.
So moved. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Jeff. All right, Taxpayer Services Division. Jody?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
You will recall at your last board meeting, I brought forward a proposal I had for reorganization of our Taxpayer Services Division. At that meeting, you gave Linda and I the support to move forward with discussions with the union. Linda has now met and worked with both the Ask Me Union and the Bureau of Mediation Services. And both are in support of the change that I had spoke about at the last meeting. So what I'm looking for, what I'm asking of the commission this evening is approval to finalize putting Taxpayer Services Division back into two separate divisions, the Real Estate and Tax Division and License Center Division, each with their own division director.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve that recommendation.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any discussion? Looks good to me. Thanks.
I think we're all in favor of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, Naco Public Lands Center.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have for you an agenda item here that has been forwarded to us from the Association of Minnesota Counties, who as you know, has a long-lasting relationship with the National Association of Counties. And essentially, Naco or the National Association of Counties has put together with the assistance of the Western Interstate Region, or what's called the WIR, a National Center for Public Lands. And essentially, this is a new endeavor by those two organizations to jointly promote and study and research and advocate for county public lands or, or those organizations, counties that have public lands. We certainly are one of those. It's also the reason we received LTAC money some time ago from the federal government directly. But in order for them to prop up this new program, they're requesting that counties who are also qualifying for this public lands county designation essentially dedicate 1% of their allocation that they receive from the LTAC funds. So in this particular case, that'd be about $3,979 for the two-year period. There is no obligation to do this, and I have also reached out to the Association of Minnesota Counties and said, well, what if we choose not to participate? And I did a good, a good answer from them on that. Either, we don't really know, like if you opt out, are you out of the program? If you opt out, you not get the benefits and the services and that sort of stuff. We're not really certain. There seems to be a great deal of interest in counties in the Western United States, so it sounds like this will be a prosperous endeavor for both WIR and also Naco. It's not a large dollar amount. The funds don't necessarily have to come from the LTAC funds if you want to participate. It's just the way they came up with the percentage of our, of our participation amount, which is the same formula they're applying nationally across the country. So I did provide in your packet information about this endeavor and also a fact sheet or informational sheet about this endeavor as well. So hopefully you had an opportunity to look at that, but I'll stand for any questions you might have on this. If it's something you want to participate in, we would need a formal motion. If it's not, then we don't, we don't need a motion to deny it. But it'd be good to get back with Naco and the Association of Minnesota Counties in regards to what our, what our decision is.
John? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if I look at money we spent just trying to get some of the tax bills to the state legislature, this sounds like a pretty cheap lobbying money in order for us to continue to get money from the federal government. And with as much land as we have, that's not taxable. We need all the help we can get, in form of pilt or whatever, seems like a pretty reasonable amount.
And Tom, is, I'm having a little struggle on whether this is promoting that we get more public land? Or if it's, or is it promoting that we get support for the public land that we already have?
Correct, yeah, it's the latter.
It's the latter, okay.
The attempt is to try to drive additional funds and revenue and support through research and collection of data on county public lands and, and drive resources our way.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would be in support of this. I think this is a, a good way to, like Commissioner Carlson was saying, only increase our chances of, you know, getting some funding in the future. This is a good way to make it known that, you know, Beltrami County supports public areas and public lands, so. But I did have a question. Is the $3,979, is that, is that just something that we're pledging at this point and then it gets expensed? I don't know when, or would this be an immediate payment?
So Commissioner Gold, my understanding is that they will probably remit an invoice, that's typically what we ask them to do. So remit an invoice to us and we would sign off on that dollar amount. They're essentially, their formula is derived by the dollar amount we received from the two-year LTAC money, and that was one-time money but received over a two-year period. And so they'll, they'll be looking in likelihood to take that full amount and prop up the, the organization at this point in time. I don't think they're intending to bill for it since it is one-time money.
Okay.
In, in periodic installments.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I guess here in the discussion, I'll make a motion to to allocate the $3,979 to the Naco Public Land Center.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any more discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess I know a little bit, you know, about this through, through my. I guess I know a little bit, you know, about this through through my uh participation with the Association of Minnesota Counties uh being on the, on the board through, through the, our District Two Director. And uh, you know, today there is quite a few county boards that are really uh um having this discussion about, you know, what what this really entails. And uh so far, I have heard that there have been ten counties that um are going to participate. And one that have declined um because they haven't received any uh types of of money from from this uh LTAC as as we have. So um, you know, this is a pretty insignificant amount to to pay to, you know, Naco and uh uh WIR for, you know, participation. I think it's a, would be a good, good opportunities, so.
Do we do that for Tom's discretion or take it out of the LTAC money?
I I would, I would say take it out the LTAC. I mean, that's, you know, basically where where we got the money from. And and I I believe uh there's still quite a quite a a mountain in there, right?
Uh, yes, sir, I would, I would make that same recommendation, have a hundred ninety-eight thousand uh after we get the second installment here in the next month or two. Uh, so this would, would be, you know, easy to pull from that.
And and uh, Mr. Chair, you know, I I've been pretty hesitant about, you know, spending down these dollars from from this one because, you know, I mean, we we really didn't know where we got it from. It's kind of a windfall, so um again, I I just think it's a uh a win-win and a good opportunity for for us to participate.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since the board has identified the funding source, it would be great if the first and the second could just amend the motion to include that funding source.
Yeah.
And second agrees.
Joe.
Great.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
And now we look at, I believe, natural resources, Beltrami Electric Cooperative U- Utility Easement. We have a motion to, we did, we need to have um
No, this was on the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna abstain from voting out.
Do I have a motion to pass that?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, right, motion was made and seconded to pass that easement. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
So it was passed uh for the, for the uh. All right, let's move on to
Budget process.
Budget process.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the amended budget process as was presented by Administrator Barry and that we uh have Commissioner Gould and Commissioner Carlson be on that committee.
All right. Sir, a second to that.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved.
And finally, Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize uh Administrator Barry to engage the firm of DDA Human Resources to help in our search for um Human Resource Director uh to the, with, to the extent of eight hundred and eighty, eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So um, Tom, you said there was ten applicants and six screened to to move on to the interview. Um, were any of those in-house applicants and would they still qualify for for an additional interview if uh through this process?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sumner, we actually had fifteen applicants, five were screened out.
Okay.
Uh, ten made it to the screening and then six were interviewed. None of them were internal candidates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, Joe, if we can start with you on the legislative and commissioner report, you can combine them tonight.
Sure. Um. I, I think the biggest thing is the recent meeting uh that Commissioner Gospig and I and and Tom and the sheriff I had with uh some um key high-level governor staff. It was an opportunity to get our message for uh funding uh for the new jail project and and to discuss our, our progress with the uh latest uh Department of Public Safety, Department of Corrections uh order. And so I, I feel like it was a overall a good meeting. Uh, we got our points across and and uh, you know, uh, we're still looking for an opportunity to meet with the governor and lieutenant governor themselves. Uh, um, but um, it was, it was, it was good overall. And uh, as far as um other legislative business, uh, it was mentioned earlier, we're in the Senate tax bill uh for both the the special sales tax of authorization and and uh construction materials. So um hopefully uh we uh stay in there during conference committee and and appreciate Tom getting us those uh conferies and and I think it would be wise for us to uh reach out to each of them individually and and uh make our case. And and hopefully there's an opportunity for us to uh uh provide some uh testimony, whether that's via Zoom or in person or or written testimony uh as the conferies uh meet and and hash out the differences there. Usually there's an opportunity during conference committee for uh people to testify in support or or against us or in provisions in the bill, so. Um. I would say that's my main report.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Uh, well, it seems like it wasn't too long ago we met, so I mean uh not much to really report on. I I think last week, um, you know, it was my daughter's uh birthday last week. And uh, and I was on my way home on on Urban Avenue, County, you know, uh County Route Fifteen. And and I was coming through Northern um Town Hall there and I was thinking, oh, you know, I just, I felt like something. And so I, I stopped there and I was like, I think I'm, I think I'm supposed to be here. I think there there's the northern, the the Beto. So so I stopped at the Beto meeting and I think, and I, and I was on my way home and I had my daughter's cake in the car. So I couldn't stay because I had my daughter's cake in the car. And and so I I stopped and apologized and and I was one of the meetings that I, that I was supposed to be at, but didn't. Um, the other was uh the Black Duck Ambulance. I'm I'm not too sure if uh Commissioner Carlson was able to go in my absence. Uh, but tonight, um I'm supposed to be, you know, it's my wife's birthday. So I gotta pick up the pizza and pick up the cake and and I'm hoping that I can be out of here soon, so that's my report. Thank you.
All right, uh, that's a hint to you guys.
Uh, just a couple of things, Mr. Chair. Um, last week I attended the Minnesota Airport Conference uh as a member of the uh Beltrami
Airport Authority.
Airport. Airport Authority. What makes you Beltr- I, whatever, the Airport Authority. Um, that was uh very interesting. I learned a lot of things and now, of course, now I know that I need to learn a lot more things. So as as what, as what happens, and I know Commissioner Gould feels the same way. It's like, man, I just don't even know what I don't know. It it's so that, but that was interesting and that was, uh, it was well-attended. And uh, what was interesting is Mike Beard was there and so was um, Mike Beard is a rep representative in the House for many years. And then Anne, I believe it was Anne Johnson, and she was a senator. It was interesting because she served a two-year term, twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, similar to the two-year term I served, eleven and twelve. Same problem for her, redistricting, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, but she was very invested in in airports, in in aviation, as is uh Representative Beard. And so they gave a great perspective on Friday morning about the whole process. So uh, what does it take to get something passed through the legislature? And uh, so I, it was something that was very familiar to me, but it was really interesting that the other people got to see that. Uh, so that was interesting. Uh, the other issue, the other thing that came up was while I was there, uh, it was in Alexandria, we had our quarterly Prime Health Board meeting. Uh, and nothing really earth-shattering there except there was a transplant done in December, not reported or billed to the insurance until April. No one had any knowledge of it. They have this thing called IBNR, which is incurred but not reported. Those are important things to make sure you get them on the books. We don't have an invoice yet for it, but we know if it's X procedure, Y procedure, or whatever it is, we can at least book an amount of money for that procedure to let our books at least are representative of of what happened last year. This was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar whoops. And so being the accountant that I am, I asked, so is, do you have to go back and restate and re, and go back to the Commerce? Yes, so all that's gonna have to happen, all their books for fiscal year twenty twenty-two are gonna have to be redone, restated and and then sent back into the Commerce Department. Um, so it was a nightmare and we're trying to get to the bottom of, they haven't gotten to the bottom of who is responsible for that. Um, but needless to say, anything that you've seen from fiscal year end twenty twenty-two from Prime Health Board, which is not Prime West, it's a Prime Health Board that administers the health insurance to the counties that participate, so for the employees of the county. Um, anyway, that was a big thing. Um, I've had a number of other uh Commissioner Anderson and I were at uh Beltrami uh Extension. Um, not a lot, or, well, I think more news to come on that with they're redistricting, uh, and so more news to come on that probably in July, but right, I think that's, that's the main things.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So um Commissioner Carlson, I I served with the Commissioner Beard on AMC board when he was uh active. Um, is he enjoying retirement or?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, he seems to be, yeah, he's doing some, some, some lobbying. Um, then he's also working for a consulting firm. Um, he seems very relaxed. Especially given the month.
Right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, had an HRDC meeting and found out that um gala we had, probably all know and have come to rely on over the years, Tiffany Fettig is not going to be available to us anymore because she's taken a job with deed with the state and 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 that Department of Economic Development or whatever, you know. Um, so uh, that was uh, that was unfortunate, but good for her. And um, had a planning commission special meeting um to go over the shoreline ordinance. We got through the rest of that, so we're, we're sending it back to get the final revisions and and stuff so that they can, so Brent can bring it forward for the board to take a look at and so that's in process. Um, and then also had a Cast Lake Real Fire meeting last week. Uh, and we got to see conceptual drawings of a new fire hall and talked about locations. And um, so we voted to approve to, you know, go to the Leach Lake Tribe and and talk to them about the potential of where we want to put it and see if if they're uh wanting to work with us on that. So some pretty exciting stuff happening there, too. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Gould for lining up our, our meeting with the governor's staff and and that uh uh every, everything we can do, uh, everything's on the table to try to get whatever we, whatever audience we can. And and so thank you for doing that. And that's my report, thank you.
And here I thought that being a county commissioner, it was just on first and uh third Tuesday. Thank you for doing such a good job with these committees. Uh, I know the one that uh was kind of eye-opener for me was, I used to interview a lot when I was principal. But uh, this interview with, started at seven thirty for uh Linda's job and went until, I think it must've been close to six, but I'm not, we'll see. Uh, so uh, Barry uh definitely has a very thorough way of looking at these folks and I appreciate that a lot. It was uh
You get to do it next.
Okay, oh, very good folks, have a good evening and uh, do I have a motion to promote?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.